Okay, can we please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna start with, we just had an election, so we're gonna start with the election of the Board of Education Officers. And for the nominations for Board Chairman, I'm gonna turn over the meeting to the Superintendent.
You got it. Thanks, Dave. At this time, I will accept a motion for someone to nominate a Board Chair.
I'd like to have Dave Ferris to be the Board Chair.
Okay. We have a motion for Dave, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? Okay. Do we have any other nominations for the position of Board Chair? Okay. Hearing none. We have a motion by Dennis and a second by Jeff. All in favor? It's unanimous for everyone that was here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's back to your meeting now.
Stuck again.
Can't have more fun than this.
Thank you, everyone. Believe it or not, thank you. For the last two years, it's been a pleasure, Joe, working with you and Sheila and all the staff. I do realize, the more that I get to know all of you and the more I get into the schools, that we have a phenomenal group of talented and professional people in all of these buildings. So, thank you very much. And I wanna thank the Board for all your help and cooperation with everything over the last two years and moving forward. Next, we have an opening for Board Vice Chair. So, do I have any nominations for Vice Chair of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Christine Gasol as Vice Chair.
Okay. Do I have a second? Chrissy? Seconded?
Ladies first.
The motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations? No? Hearing none and no discussion. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Unanimous? Almost, except for Christine. Yeah. Got that. And I didn't vote either for myself, duly noted.
Mm-hmm.
Joe was supposed to say, "Any abstentions," and I was gonna raise my hand. Or actually, "Any against," and I was gonna raise my hand. Motion is moved. Congratulations, Christine. Do I have nominations for Secretary of the Board? Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Alan Bagruvile as Secretary.
Alan for Secretary. Do I have a second? Jerry? Second? Do I have any discussion? No discussion. Any other nominations from the floor for Board Secretary? Any other nominations? Hearing none. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Alan, thank you for that. Okay. We're gonna move to the report of the Chairman. Number one, we have a new Board Member. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you.
Jumping right into it. It's budget season, so coming from the Board of Finance, we're gonna rely on that and put you to work.
Absolutely.
All right.
Happy to be here.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. Joe, we have some donations to recognize.
We do. We have almost $6,000 in donations tonight. I wanna, I know a few folks are here. I wanna make sure we recognize them. Folks who are not here, though, I know we did receive $500 from the Page Charitable Fund. That money was designated to be used. It says where it's needed most, but it was where it was needed most, at Fawn Hollow. So, that will be going over to Fawn Hollow. We also have, we'd like to, you know, thank and appreciate Terry Rooney, who donated $750 for the Masick Robotics Program. And then the other folks are here, and I'd love for them to come up and to be recognized, even though one's sitting on the board with us. The first is Jerry Stevens for his donation of $1,710.80 to be used for the Wingman Program at Masick.
Nice. Thank you, Jerry. Yep. Absolutely.
The Wingman, the Wingman Program's an awesome program at Masick. I know Steve and Lisa Peterson and Ian Lowell have done a great job overseeing that. It really addresses issues of school climate and leadership and whatnot, so that will be money well spent. And finally, I'd like to ask our private citizen Kellogg, our former first-letman, to come up. And also, please, Ken, if you can, also introduce, and maybe they can come up too. I'd like to recognize everybody from your foundation that donated $3,000 to the Masick PTC for the post-prom. So, I'd like to guys to come up too.
Good job.
Thanks, Joe.
Well, this former stranger of mine is my wife, Mary Kellogg. Karen Cardy, who maybe you probably know chaired the post-prom for how many years, Karen?
One or two.
Yeah, let's keep it at that.
And John Stone, who's also the Chairman of our Parks and Rec Commission, is here. And frankly, who could not be here today is also on our Board. And just for the record, it is the Monroe First Foundation. It's the organization that, yes, that we formed to do this. So, happy to contribute to a really worthy cause of the post-prom.
Thank you. Can you get us all in?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you to all of our donors.
It means a lot to us, very much so. So, thank you. We're gonna move forward to the reports of the committees. I wanna go over committees. Yep. I'm gonna, that's the new one, right? Yep. Okay. I wanna go over first our standing committees and committee assignments. So, for the Board of Finance liaison will be me as needed and then Dennis. The CES will be Chrissy and Dennis as an alternate. Okay? Curricular Council, I'm waiting for someone to get back to me on that one, but right now that's open. For the Finance Committee, which I know does not meet that often, we'll have to discuss that a little further if that's still wanted by this Board. But we have Alan, Justin, and Greg for that. Our Policy Committee will be Christine as Chair, Jerry and Jeff. Thank you for that. For Pension Committee, we're gonna stay with Chrissy and Dennis. I will remain on safety and, health and safety, I should say. And then, we have a need for a new ad hoc policy, so I'd like to read this.
New ad hoc committee?
Committee. Sorry, not a policy. But we do have it in policy. Pursuant to Board Bylaws Policy Number 9130, I hereby designate the formation of an ad hoc district-wide master plan consultant selection committee to review and evaluate proposals for planning and architectural services in connection with a district-wide master plan and to recommend a consultant or consultants to the full Board for approval. The ad hoc committee shall expire once a final contract or contracts for district-wide master plan services has been entered into between the selected consultant or consultants in the Board. Pursuant to Board Bylaw 9130, I appoint the following Board Members to the ad hoc committee. So, that will be myself. Joe, who else stepped up for that?
I know Jeff. I know Jeff was interested, and I think we were looking for Dennis or Chrissy. Whatever. I'm sorry.
I'm happy to do it. No, it doesn't matter.
Rock, scissors, paper?
No, it doesn't matter. I'm happy to do it if you don't want to.
Okay. And I am going to reach out to the Chair of Board of Finance and ask him for an appointment. Hear that, Steve? Okay? To ask him for a member, and we'll have yourself, right? Dan?
Maybe Dan, Ron, Sheila, yeah.
Yep.
Or one of us might not be on.
On that, on that committee.
We'll figure it out. So, we have a non-number.
All right. And then, just so everybody knows, this is to select the architectural firm that's going to do the study. And then, once the study is turned in, then we'll form a new committee, which is gonna be a lot bigger and a lot more expansive to get into the real big, the real big stuff. Okay? So, we got that. Thank you, Joe. All right. So, I will update the Board when I have some further discussions with everyone about Curriculum Council. I know that's four in the afternoon. Do they meet monthly? Where's?
Yes.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, the first, the first Wednesday of the month. We don't have one in January, though, so you do have a little bit.
I have time?
Yeah. We got one this week, but then we won't have another one. I could probably do that. No one else wants to.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Four o'clock? Four o'clock. Here.
I could be his alternate.
You know what? Alan, why don't you take that? And then, if another member can jump in, that would be great. Okay?
Okay.
I did ask Justin. That's what, and I haven't heard back from him yet. But Alan, why don't you do that if you can? And I'll follow up with him. Okay? All right. Thank you. So, you good with those? We can get those published and updated on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Greg's gonna get set up with email and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to public participation. Is there anyone here?
Are you doing committee shows?
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You're, I'm jumping ahead of myself.
Right.
We have the students to report. Thank you, Sheila.
Sorry.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Monroe Board of Education. I hope you're having a marvelous Monday. This Wednesday, the eighth grade orientation will take place at Masick. This is an opportunity for incoming future freshman class to learn from current Masick students who'll take on the roles of tour guides. As we begin to welcome our future class to Masick, we hope to inspire them to become active and successful leaders in our community. Students and staff at Masick are working to continuing support the SWAG Community Center in Bridgeport this holiday season. The Red Army, Interact, and National Honor Society have spearheaded the exchange of more than 270 gifts, which will take place on December 14th from 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you for all participants.
Masick Fall Sports came to a close with football losing their semifinals game on Sunday to Wilton. Students are now looking forward to winter sports, which have begun within the past couple of weeks. Boys' basketball will be having their first game at Trumbull next Friday, and girls' basketball face Wilton home next Monday. Tomorrow at 5:30, Science National Honor Society looks forward to hosting Science Night, where there will be numerous science experiments kids can engage in and use to explore the STEM field.
Four Masick Robotics Teams, 4478 E, K, U, and Y, competed this weekend at Worcester Polytechnic Institute against some of the best teams in the nation. The three-day-long event had teams going head-to-head against other robots in this year's game, over-under, while also performing solo offensive skills runs and talked to judges about their progress thus far in the year. This event gave our teams valuable knowledge going into the toughest stretch of their season, as well as the regional and world championships in March and May, respectively. The B Positive Club will be hosting a gift-wrapping fundraiser on December 15th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. for all those who are in the holiday mood but not in the gift-wrapping one. All proceeds will go towards children affected by cancer. Make sure to stop by and support. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Do any Board Members have any other committee reports? Now that I look at my notes, it says students and others. No other committee reports?
No.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to public participation. Anyone for public participation? There were no sign-ups? Okay. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. I had a note here for the minutes for 11:27. Can we replace Christine to Alan on that one, please? I see Diane shaking her head. Thank you. Because Alan was the acting secretary for the, those two special meetings on 11:20 and 11:27. Anyone else have any comments on the minutes or questions on minutes as posted? No? Okay. Any questions or comments on the warrants?
Excuse me, Dave?
Yes?
We needed to change the statutes in the minutes to the correct.
On the motions?
Yes.
Yeah. Let's make sure that gets done. Let's check with Diane.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
That was from the first meeting, right? That was Ms. Red?
Correct.
It was Ms. Red?
Okay.
I thought it was the second one.
Second. Let's check them all.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the warrants or wire? Of anyone? Go ahead, Dennis.
I'll hold off for now.
Okay.
I think I have my answer.
All righty. Joe, we have a couple of retirements?
We do. I wanna congratulate both Beth Bailey and Roseanne Houghton, who have submitted their letters of retirement effective at the end of this school year. After one year in Stanford, Beth Bailey has been in Monroe for the last 30 years, so her entire career, I believe, has been at Fawn Hollow Elementary and where she's served as a special education teacher. And I know folks here are familiar with Roseanne. Roseanne has served the Monroe Public Schools for the last 20 years. She was a kindergarten teacher, a third-grade teacher, a fifth-grade teacher, I believe also all at Fawn Hollow, if I'm not mistaken. She served as the district math and science coordinator before we moved that position over to her current responsibilities as the elementary instructional leader for math and science. So, I thank both Roseanne and Beth for the years of service and wish them nothing but happiness.
Absolutely. All right. Any questions concerning the budget transfer? I looked it up. It's for a behavioral analyst.
V C B A.
I didn't know what that was for. Yep. So, I actually looked. Any questions on that? No? It's right on our threshold, so it's fine. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis? Seconded by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. I'll start by bringing up Jen for her report.
Hi, Jen. Okay. I'm gonna be short tonight. So, we had one student move in in November. We had three students that were dismissed from services, and we had four students that were made eligible. So, that brings our total number of identified students to 580. If you look at our financials, we did have some spending in our tuition private line at approximately $69,000. That was due to student programming. And in turn, we also had to increase our spending in transportation for the same reason to about another $40,000. So, that was the additional spending, and then all of our other lines are pretty stable at the moment. And again, as I had said before, we're gonna get our first installment of excess costs back at the end of January, and we'll see where we are. Because remember, last year, we did get a lot more than 70%. So, we'll see how things are. Right now, it looks like 70%, but there is some talk about getting more. So, hopefully, we will get more. But right now, we're planning for 7%, which is about $570,000.
It's a good chunk. It'll bring us back to where we need to be.
We're down $575,000 down right now.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that'll be nice to get.
Yes, very much so. Questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
I have two things. I know I only had one on here, but something came in late Friday night, so I wanna make sure I address that, too. The kindergarten registration and then, late Friday night, we got our, the information back on our reading waiver, so I wanna share that with you as well. But just talking about kindergarten registration, Sheila, Jen, Mike, and I met with the elementary principals, the elementary instructional leaders, and Michaela Kodos, who's actually the preschool psychologist, school psychologist regarding the changes to the kindergarten entry age next year. If you remember, the age changed from January 1st to September 1st. You know, Connecticut was one of the last of this, in the states, to make this change. We're starting to get inquiries now. So, I just wanna share our process and what we're gonna be disseminating out to families later this week with a letter. So, basically, if your child's born September 1st or before that, you know, there's absolutely nothing needs to be done. For kids who are born between September 2nd and December 31st, and the parents want them to come to school, they must send us in a written request. That request will go to Terry Stellato, my administrative assistant. Per the statute, we will assess the child. The assessment's gonna include a number of things. Number one, it's gonna include a observation and input from the child's parents or guardians, observations and input from any preschool teachers that the children may have had. And then, in March, we're gonna start doing in-person assessments with the kids conducted by our staff. They're short assessments to just look at, you know, finding gross motor skills and some, you know, early identification for literacy, numeracy, those types of things. The letter that we're gonna send out to help parents, you know, kind of make an informed decision, is gonna have kindergarten readiness milestones on it. It's kind of like, just to help if parents aren't sure, do I send my child? Do I, do I ask my child to be assessed? Do I not? These milestones will kind of help them make some decisions. It looks at things like language, literacy, numeracy, social-emotional readiness, cognition, and, once again, those motor skills. We know that this legislation is gonna impact us. It's gonna impact families as well, though. A lot of families, you know, I just got an email today, you know, someone had moved to Connecticut, they're new to the area, and they were not intending on daycare, you know, beginning next year. So, you know, we know that this could impact our preschool numbers a little bit. Fortunately, preschool with the changes that we made last year is a one area where we can absorb some kids right now, where we move to the AM PM program. But we're gonna get kindergarten registration up and running soon. This letter is gonna, kind of detailing this, is gonna go out to parents hopefully later this week, and we're gonna open up registration about a month early, so we can get those kids in and try to get them assessed and talk to our, talk to our staff. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I guess for my own edification.
Yep.
How do you determine, or how's it determined, which families are gonna be receiving that letter?
So, it's a great question, because if you don't have kids in the district, it's hard, right? So, it will go out on School Messenger, so if you do have kids in the district, that, you know, that's definitely one way to get. We'll reach out to the Monroe son and ask him to send out a press release. And then, we send the letter to all of the, there's a number, just for like every year, we do kindergarten registration. We send a letter to all of the, you know, Tiny Treasures and Child World and, you know, all the different daycares and preschools.
Intend daycares.
Gingerbread.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah. We have a listing. I think it, some even right out of town, too, in some of the surrounding areas. So...
The screeners, though, you're not gonna do until later in the spring, because that can make an impact on the student.
The screeners we're looking at. It's tricky, because we, you know, we've talked about this a lot. The screeners, yeah, it's tough, because a four-year-old in March, who may have been three in December, you know?
Right.
But we've, we've talked about that, about, you know, trying to do them probably in, you know, March, April times.
Give them a little time.
And we'll, and we'll continue to work with families, too. We're not anticipating this to be a huge number of kids, but, you know, it's gonna impact some families and...
This first year especially.
Yeah.
Does it expedite the additional space that we need?
I'm sorry?
Will this expedite the additional space that you need?
I'm not sure yet. That's, yeah, that's what we're gonna, I think it's gonna be the interesting piece to see what we get for, you know, what we get back from, if we get anything back in terms of space or any decreased size. I think it's gonna depend. Think we looked at it this year. We had, it was about 40, about 40 kids in kindergarten. That would've fallen in that age range, across three schools.
Gotcha.
So... So, the other thing I just wanted to update the Board about, you know, we sent in, you know, we've talked about this reading waiver a number of times, and we sent the, you know, we sent our waiver in a while ago. We were supposed to get feedback in June. That never happened. Finally, they did do a conference with us to ask us some clarifying questions, so we did go through that process, and then they said they would have them back by December 1st. So, they didn't lie, they did this time, they did come back December 1st. It was about 8:30 at night. I didn't have the heart to email everyone else that's done so much work on it, but, so we got our, we got our waiver back. We've been, we've been granted a transitional waiver. So, there's a number of different categories. I don't have all the information yet on, on all of the different categories, but basically, in a nutshell, our waiver, you know, gave us accolades for our work in fluency, phonemic awareness, and phonics, and where it said it was transitional was in the areas of vocabulary and comprehension. So, basically, a traditional, a transitional waiver requires us to add or subtract, add or substitute some specific programming or curriculum components to what we have. So, I'm pretty confident with, you know, Mike and Kim and Sheila and the reading consultants that, you know, we're gonna be in a good place when this is all said and done. The, I know a lot of my colleagues are, we're trying to get a meeting together soon to kind of discuss. I know, just in talking to some of the folks today, you know, some districts were outwardly just denied, denied their waivers, and some, you know, received similar ones like ours, partial and transitional waivers. So, I know there is a press release coming out tomorrow, and I think we'll find out then what districts actually were approved and, you know, are not approved and whatnot. From what I also understand, any changes that we would need to make to fulfill the requirements would go in by July of 2025. So, we have the entire school year this year and all of next school year. So, I'm pretty confident in where we are, you know, like I said, with Mike and Kim at the helm.
So, they don't require you to use an actual program?
I think if you get denied, they do say you have to choose between one of these. I don't know, Mike, is it still seven?
Yeah. I mean, and then there's now compendium of programs, so the idea of, they're looking at, through the waiver process, they also added a bunch of different programs with the compendium, which included things like Hegarty, which we use, plus one of the open-source Bookworms, which is one of them. So, they added some pieces so that, because they broke down the waiver into these different sections of fluency and, you know, comprehension and vocabulary, they knew that they had to say like, "Okay, we can't have you, you don't have to use, you don't have to change everything you're doing, but here's a little, you know, you may have to change part of it, and here is a list that you could choose from." And when you look at those lists, there are things we could take from it to support the comprehension and vocabulary. So, we may not need, we probably don't need to adopt an entire program. We might need to, you know, substitute sections of a program. And that's what Kim and I, you know, started the conversation today, to sort of say like, what does the whole program need to look like, given the things that were approved and things that we need to sort of balance with that? So, it's a good thing we have eight months.
Is that something, though, to your point, Joe, if you're having discussions with other districts where you guys can support each other, the RSC's offering to say, "Okay, you know, you might've done well in the decoding and someone else did well in the comprehension, how do we share resources?"
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Don't reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
So, you could take like a phonics program from one curriculum and then a fluency program from another?
That's sort of how they set up the compendiums. I mean, the way they did it, if you look at the letter from the state is they said this program in conjunction with these three programs or, you know, but we didn't need to do any of those three programs because we got an okay on three of those programs. So, we have to look at this one section of it and how are we going to utilize that one section? So, yeah, so there are pieces that we could take.
And I'm assuming we're not using that teachers' college anymore?
We do still use, we do still use some of the teachers' college units of study.
Like the, the writing piece, like nothing, you know, the writing piece was fine. We didn't get anything about having to change the writing piece at all and.
They didn't look at the writing?
They didn't look at the writing?
Even though we had to set it in.
We sent it in.
Oh, really?
But, but everything that they're talking about is, is the reading part.
No, I know.
And the part with teachers' college.
They were flushed on the toilet, aren't they? They just disbanded.
Right, but what they reviewed through Ed Reports was the previous edition. We have a current edition that was actually updated to be more in line with the science of reading than the one that was evaluated and deemed not good.
But you're not, you don't have them, they're not supporting you anymore, obviously. Didn't we talk about them coming in, the coaches coming in and working with the staff?
Yeah, the program's not existent anymore.
Right, so.
We still have K through two with the phonics. We're still using the phonics and that was the part that got rave reviews from the state. So, we do still have staff developers coming in, working with K to two.
Where are they coming from?
It's, they've moved into a new, what's the name of it?
I know, like Flower, something Flower. I can't remember the name of it. Like the trainers are from.
They created like a new.
New company.
It's an offset.
Moss Flower.
Moss Flower. I'm sorry. Moss Flower.
So, they just took over the contracts part.
Which in effect, which we found out was they were always sort of a separate entity. They served underneath the teachers' collar, college umbrella, but they were always a separate entity unto itself, the PD trainers. So, now they're a separate entity and they still support the pieces. You know, you know, as we look forward and one of the things we're going to talk about is what, what does the PD look like? I mean, we still have, you know, we still support the phonics program through them because it's the new program has been very successful, you know, with, with the students. So, as we move forward and we look at where we need to go and to sort of supplement things, does then maybe have to change some of PD? Absolutely. So, but we didn't know where we were actually going to be at this point. Yeah.
So, that program's approved by the state?
The program we're using.
Phonics program we're using for K through two.
Well, our phonics program includes that, use of Hegarty, use of other, you know, other pieces that are part of the state. And when they look at it, our compendium of resources, because that was what our waiver was, was a compendium of resources. And when they use that in conjunction with the TC, they said we met the requirements of the state. Because we were doing, you know, we used a, which we knew we were, we were doing this before the waiver even started. You know, we were using these sort of compendium of resources. But yeah, Alan, you're right that we need, you know, what she was saying, the old one was not approved by the state. But we're hopeful that there might be some changes coming about with the new ones too with Ed Reports and such.
Any questions for the superintendent? Other questions? No? Nope. Okay. Joe, Paul is going to do a follow-up presentation on the one-to-one Chromebooks.
He is. Yeah, I want to thank Paul and Julia, Steve, Mike, Sheila. You know, we sat and we looked at this, you know, we, we brought this up. We brought this up last year at the end of the school year and I appreciate all the feedback we got then. I want to thank everybody for their feedback then, because I think there's a lot of things we needed to go back and really figure. I think this is going to be really rushed if we were trying to do it. So, this, you know, starting this fall, we sat and we started, you know, we started looking at this one once again and, you know, have, I think a, a little bit better, more cohesive plan. And I think that the important thing, you know, before I kind of turn it over to Paul and when we met, I said, that was really important to explain why we're doing this. And really there's, you know, the three big key areas are, as you see, engagement, safety and instructional time. And we talk about engagement, by our kids having one-to-one, we can, we're actually trying to pilot something this year called Go Guardian. Go Guardian is a software that a teacher can use. So, they're right in front of their, you know, they're right in front of their computer and they can see exactly what everybody else is, you know, if everybody's on the right, right pages, right websites where they're supposed to be, they can, they can lock it down like, okay, hey, they want you on these, you know. Maybe if they're doing some kind of an independent research, you know, you can use these six sites and making sure that people are on there. Whereas, you know, with, you know, individual, with kids that have their own technology, they can't, they can't do that kind of stuff. So, that's a, that's a big piece. So, it doesn't work if kids are on their own devices. Obviously, you know, safety is a huge thing for us with our kids. We talk about cybersecurity all the time, you know, kids bring their, if they bring their own devices, they have cellular data, they can skirt right around our, you know, our, our system and, you know, get onto all kinds of things, TikTok, Discord, a lot of things. And we have, you know, really no control over that. And then the last thing before I turn it over, you know, to, to the gang here, is just looking at instructional time for our teachers. You know, we have kids working on Chromebooks. If we have a problem with the Chromebook, we go to IT. We can swap out a Chromebook easily enough, whatever. A lot of times our teachers are dealing with multiple platforms. A kid comes in with a MacBook, a kid comes in with a different tablet or something like that. If they're having, you know, either interface problems or some kind of issues with their, our teachers are spending a lot of time trying to figure out, you know, troubleshoot their problems. But we won't have, you know, that kind of goes away if we, if we are, you know, we're all using the district-owned devices. Was that a good summary? Could I ask this little person talking points on that? So, I'll turn it over to Paul who's really.
If you want to keep going.
But I'll, I'll turn it over to Paul because he really is, is, and all, everybody has really put together a pretty thoughtful presentation and some really good ideas. And I thought it was important that we do this now because obviously it's going to have, you know, a little bit of a budgetary impact as well.
All right. So, thank you, Joe. So, some more bullet points here, as Joe alluded, you know, using standard technology and safeguards. This plan, if we fully implement it, would replace or phase out the BYOT initiative that we currently have. It also will provide a defined plan for timely Chromebook replacements. It will simplify our asset management and assures devices will be available to students. It helps maintain a level budget request based on population. And the plan would carry forward beginning next school year. We just continue the cycle. So, the last time I presented this, I, I know that there were concerns about the longevity of the devices. So, we went back to the drawing board and we also polled other schools, other districts. Districts all over the state do different things. Some are full one-to-one, some are one-to-one for like, let's say, just middle school or middle school and high school. So, there's a whole mix. What we decided was because of the testing requirements, that if we purchase brand-new Chromebooks for all of the new third grade students for next year, the, there would be no change at the elementary level. In other words, right now, every student in the elementary schools gets assigned a Chromebook in their classroom. They don't take it home. It stays at school, but it is assigned to them. And that follows them through fifth grade. So, this plan would stay the same, except all new, all the third graders would get brand-new Chromebooks. And they would keep them in the elementary schools. And then when they get to Jackie Hollow, that Chromebook would then follow them. And now they would get assigned that Chromebook that they may, if they want to, take home for home use. Okay? This would be like the more true one-to-one at sixth grade, so they can bring it to and from school. So, in sixth grade, they would get the same device they had, similar device that they had in fifth grade. It may not be exactly one-to-one, but everything that was in fifth grade will now move to sixth grade. They'll be assigned and again, they can use them at school, at home. If they want to keep it over summer recess, they can for summer work. And then in eighth grade, they would get a new device. So, in eighth grade, that device is now five years old. In eighth grade, they get, we did the same thing that we did this past year. We took the new set of Chromebooks and we deployed it to the current eighth grade. And this would now be their device until their senior year. Okay? It would be assigned to them. And again, same thing, they can use it at home, keep it over summer recess. And once they graduate high school, they would turn it back in. So, for grades nine through twelve, we would phase it in with the current ninth graders because they have the brand-new Chromebooks from this current year. They would be the first group to start and keep their device until they graduate. And again, all the same things, the students can keep them over summer recess and they would turn them in upon graduation. On our end, we will pre-assign the devices to the students in Power School. And devices and chargers will be labeled with studenting. And the devices will be accounted in both Power School and our Google Admin Console. So, we'll, we'll have some checks and balances. And the time spent managing daily loaners will be greatly reduced because each student, whether they take it home or not, each student is going to get assigned a device and it'll be theirs. And we will fully support it. We'll have plenty of spares, so accidents happen and they can just get swapped out right at the media centers. We'll offer insurance. It'll be fifty dollars per year optional beginning in sixth grade because that's when they'll be eligible to take them home. It'll cover one full replacement during the life of their, their, during the cycle. It'll cover any non-abuse repair. And obviously, if they're playing baseball out back with, with a Chromebook, you know, that's going to, that'll show. But the monies we collect for the people that do take the optional insurance will go into a technology Chromebook fund. And that will be like a self-sustaining fund that will ensure that we have money for replacements, repairs, so on and so forth. If there is no insurance taken, then a complete device replacement would be two hundred and fifty dollars and a charger replacement would be fifty dollars. And those are, those are basically our costs. Students would need to abide by a one-to-one handbook that we would need to come up with. Students would acknowledge each school year through sign-offs. Chromebooks turned in at graduation would then be redeployed for the non-testing grades and/or used for spare parts. And so, some of the next steps to move this forward, obviously, is going to be changed to policy. So, they would need to be the BOE Policy Committee. There's a budget consideration because we would then be looking to increase the line for our Chromebook purchases. There would need to be a parent communication component to this. We'd need to create a one-to-one handbook, which we have some examples of. And convene implementation staff at the buildings to plan and troubleshoot deployment. Although I think in the past, I mean, that's gone pretty well. And finally, obviously, board approval.
Questions? The fifty dollars optional, why can't we make it mandate? If you're taking your computer home where we have lost control, why can't that be a standard fee? Seventh grade, you're turning, it's like you get fifty dollars because you're taking it home and we know things will happen when they're transporting these things.
Sure.
So, why, why was it necessarily optional?
Well, it doesn't have to be. And I put it optional, but I mean, that, that's a board decision, you know, to say, look, you know, we're going to, if you're going to take it home, then we're going to mandate. So, either way would work. It just depends on, you know, what, what everybody would think would be the best way.
I think the thought right now is that it would be, it would be an insurance policy. If people want to take the insurance, if they don't want to take the insurance and if something happens to it, then they pay two fifty for a complete, you know, then I'm sure there would probably be a menu of, you know, keyboard, you know.
Right.
Keyboard is this, a cracked screen is this, a lost charger is, you know, those are probably the two biggest things. It's complete replacement and lost charger.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if it's, we can talk about it, you know, that would have to probably go into the policy.
Then we'd have to talk about a waiver for those that couldn't afford it.
Right.
If there's kids in town too, right?
Need-based, you can do that, but I think it would ensure the deployment and rapid replacement of things if we have some fee to do this because, you know, now the kid doesn't have his book and he doesn't have, his mom doesn't have two fifty or his father doesn't have two fifty to replace it. You know, we're going to give him a loaner and have the cycle start again. So, we gotta, we gotta think that through. I think we gotta have some income. And it causes responsibility. You know, it's your device, you're liable for it.
I just think that sends a message though, that we're making people pay for them and that kind of defeats the purpose.
Most of them are, most of them are optional, Dennis. You know, usually what minds up happening is, you know, the, something happens, it breaks. Oh, oh, can I just pay the fifty dollars to get the insurance now? That's usually what happens. You know, I went through it in my previous school. We implemented one-to-one. Most, I'd say ninety percent took it. We did use, you know, free and reduce. That's something that we're going to have to apply to, to the insurance costs as well, to the, you know, to the fee of that. But, you know, most people took it, but for those who didn't, you know, some, you know, not got away with it, but didn't need it because, you know, nothing happened.
Keep us responsible.
But, but most of them, you know, at some point in time, you know, but.
Okay. So, it's not a one-year thing. You can do it whenever.
Yeah, yeah.
It's acceptable.
Most people are taking insurance because it just makes sense to.
The insurance is actual, like through an insurance?
No, 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 no. It's just, it's money here because who's, who's fixing? These guys are, you know, and they need to buy parts, you know, and that's where the older ones can use your parts. Because usually it's keys, screens sometimes, you know, sometimes the.
The charging ports, cables, lots of cables.
Cords, you know, the, the ports and things like that, you know, and, you know, these are the guys that are fixing it. So, you know, it's usually, you know, usually.
No, thanks for clarifying that.
It does, you know, Paul talked about it quickly. It does put us on a schedule of replacement. You know, we're, we're often speak to this much better than I can. But right now, what ends up happening is, you know, during COVID, we got a ton of money in, which was great. And intentionally for, to be used for Chromebooks because we wanted to make sure we had access, you know, kids had access, there was equity and access for the folks. But now we have a bunch of devices that we have from that year that are all going to die in a couple of years. So, this kind of, this gets us on a regular schedule of updating them. So, we're not constantly trying to, you know, Sudoku puzzle that together.
So, how long are you looking at for turnover? I was, I lost, sorry.
Five years. So, third to eighth, you know, third through it, through, through seventh is five years and eighth through twelfth is five years.
I lost track as you were going through the slides. I was, I thought everything it was for.
Seven years.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so.
So, five is better.
Yeah. Not only that, five is, is the absolute minimum. And they're actually now supporting them six plus depending on the, on the make and model. So, this guarantees, if we move forward with this, this absolutely guarantees that we have ready devices that will meet all of the, the test standards for, for all the grades.
So, Paul, can you forward a sample policy to, for our policy committee to look at it? I think the biggest thing is that we would not be allowing BYOT anymore, right? People would not be allowed to bring their own.
Phasing it out.
Yeah.
Because next year it would be the current eighth grade as they are ninth graders. Next year would be one-to-one, but ten through twelve BYOT.
Right.
So, you're kind of phasing that out as this year's eighth grade goes through.
While back, we honored a teacher who was finishing, refurbishing computers and cycling them in. So, has he been brought into the loop? I don't know if he's still doing it, you know, that, I forget the gentleman's name. But he was, he was acknowledged at a lunch.
Oh, he was a parent.
Right, a parent.
Yeah.
That'd be the end of that.
Paul, what, what does our current Chromebook line look like in the budget and versus what you anticipate seeing with this program? If it was initially, you know, if we move forward with it?
Yeah, so this past, with this current year, the, the line for Chromebooks was seventy-five thousand. And I would be looking, the ask for next year would be a hundred and fifty thousand.
And that would be?
That would be for the third and the eighth grade replacements.
Right, and that would be, you know, and moving forward every year?
Correct. Unless, unless there was a big change in population. You know, but generally speaking, yes.
And then the insurance funding, do you see, if, if what Steve would said, you know, happened in his previous school of being ninety percent, you said that, that's going to feed back into the program for replacement?
I would think after next year, Jeff, it would go down.
Yeah.
Because I think you're going to find most of the people are going to take, if we have four full grades taking insurance, that's fifty dollars times a thousand people. We may be looking, you know, next year, the ask is going to be two full grades. But then after that, it could be like one and a half grades depending on usage and, you know, what that line has to be spent on. But it should be less after the initial year.
And along those lines of financing it, we pulled the rabbit out of the hat before with grant money. Anything out there that you could use this?
No, not, not specifically for this. And then that was the problem too. And this was, and again, this is where we, we really need to come up with a definitive plan and a budget. Because, for example, during COVID, we've got, we got over one thousand Chromebooks that were sent to us from the feds, from the state, from the state again, you know. I, you know, and now while it was great to get all those devices, they're all gonna, they're all going to be end of life at the same time. And I'm really, I'm just really trying to avoid having these kind of issues going forward where we can just kind of stay on a level, even keel. And, and still, and still move forward with the technology.
Right. So, Paul, you'll, you'll adjust that five-year capital plan that you do?
It's not on, we, we had taken, we had taken that out of capital.
Well, I know some things were, right, were put back in operations, but I'm saying the other, all of it?
All of it was.
Okay.
Yeah, last year.
All right. So, staff laptops and desktops for the buildings, it's all, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's all part of OpEx now.
Okay. That rotation we're going to maintain?
Yes, yes.
How is the new technology in the newer Chromebooks?
It doesn't change all that much. I mean, the processors get better and obviously with the better hardware supports better operating systems, which is why they put a finite life on these Chromebooks because the software just keeps getting better and better and you need that hardware to run it. But consistently as a, as a platform, it's, it's a stable platform. So, I mean, the hardware, I think personally, the stuff that I've seen as of late is certainly more robust and a little bit more durable to the price point than initially. You know, initially, you know, if you were spending two fifty for a, a Chromebook, you, you got a two hundred and fifty dollar Chromebook. I mean, they were pretty flimsy, the early ones. They have, they have gotten better for the price point and they're certainly a little bit more durable.
Paul, is that one fifty include like licensing fees?
Yeah, no, that's, that's everything.
And as far as like the level of Chromebook, does an elementary school student need the same caliber or robustness of a Chromebook as someone in high school?
So, that's why, that's why we, we rotate them. So, like for example, let's say when the eighth graders get their new Chromebooks. So, the seventh graders are going to turn them in. We're going to take those Chromebooks, they're going to get shuffled down to K two.
Okay.
Right? Because they don't need, they don't need. Right, because they don't need, they don't need great stuff.
Right.
I know second grade right now, with one of the Ames Web Assessment that they use, that requires a more modern Chromebook. But that's okay, because we'll have plenty to support the second grade without having to purchase additional. And then we'll just, everything will get cycled through.
All right, Paul, thank you for that update.
Jerry, no, no questions, Jerry?
I want to ask you which, what brand you're using now. And I know you're going to put out the bid, I got that, but what are you using now?
Lenovo.
That's right now. You enjoy those? You've looked at Samsung, you looked at all the other ones?
We did, yeah. I mean, for the price point, and Lenovo's on the state contract as well. So that, that makes it easier from a purchasing standpoint. But yeah, just with, with the features, the price point, the durability, I do, I like the Lenovo.
And then I will just, just question, I understand the process, but as a former technology education teacher, I love the fact they brought their own technology, and I understand what we're doing, I got it. I got it. So Jackie House students will be able to bring their Chromebooks home, the middles won't. So any work they want to do in tech ed, shirt design, whatever they want to do on their Chromebook is home, and they can just bring it in, process it, got it. I just, we used our phones a lot, and that's how the lab worked.
Yeah, no.
I understand the world, I got it.
Well, then, that's just it, right? Because, well, back then, TikTok wasn't really a thing, right? And so on and so forth, so, yeah.
What's the rotation for the graphics labs? I know we're talking Chromebook, but what are we doing in the desktops at Masic for robotics at Jackie Hollow? What's happening?
That's all part of our replacement plan as well. That's a separate line item that I budget for every year. But yeah, we just replaced a couple of labs.
And what's the yearly cycle? I don't need it, Paul.
Yeah, generally, five years for desktops, yeah. Generally, five years is what we target. Yep.
Anything else for Paul? No, all right, Paul. So thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Can you get that policy in? We'll start with that right away.
Paul, it would help if you were there when, sorry, Paul, when you do present it to us, if you could show it that night like you did in the past, it would help.
Oh, of course.
We're going to have questions, it would be nice to have you there.
I wouldn't miss it for the world, Jerry.
We definitely want to get this, you know, I mentioned the parent communication, we want to be able to get this movement so we can, have the approval of the board for it, and then get information out to parents sooner rather than later. So we don't want to wait. Last year, when we were presenting it, it was almost summertime, and some people had already probably gotten devices from down here. So we don't want, we don't want that to happen for families.
Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. We have curriculum second review with a vote anticipated. Any questions or discussion on the Unified PE Wellness Proposal and Course Description as presented to us at the last meeting?
Just one, it says approximately half the students would be, you know, needs. What if you have eighty, twenty? Are you handling?
It's a good question.
It depends on our population of students, it depends on how we can do it.
Yeah, it depends on schedule, student requests. Thank you. I'm sure the goal, like anything, would be at least fifty-fifty.
Absolutely, that is all equal.
Yeah.
So can I have a motion approved, the Unified PE Wellness Program as presented at our eleven twenty twenty-three BOE meeting? I see Christine raising her hand, motion by Christine, seconded by Chrissy. Any further discussion? I think it's a great program.
It's awesome.
So we'll move forward.
I did attend that meeting virtually. I did watch, so I'm familiar with it.
Yep, yeah, I think it's a great program, so I'm excited to go forward with it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you very much. We have no new business except for Jerry?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Jerry. Do I have a second? Christine, nobody's got a second. We're going to sit here. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everybody.
Good night.